Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting, October 20th meeting in the common council order. Please call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy.
Here.
Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney is ex... oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Sweeney... Counselor McDonald is excused. Jumping the gun there. Counselor Garfield.
Here.
Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Dennis Dobek.
Here.
And Counselor Esther Dobek.
Here.
I'll ask for your consideration in the minutes of October 6th. For the motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item number five are public hearings. Five point one is a public hearing on a resolution to approve the 2016 through 2020 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and 2016 Action Plan.
At this time, we'll call for a public hearing. And wish... Jason, you want to speak first?
You want me to speak first?
That'd be good.
Okay. All right. Counselors, Mayor, thank you.
Just wanted to talk a little bit about the Consolidated Plan as well as the 2016 Action Plan. Wanted to bring a few things to your attention. The Consolidated Plan is something that we're federally required, if we want to get any block grant dollars, to put out every five years, and it sets out our priorities. We hired MSA Professional Services to guide us through this process. It's a pretty intensive public process, as well as getting together with the folks that are providers in the kind of the low to moderate income realm in the city of Superior. So essentially, it's just a planning document that we're required to do by HUD. It's our application for CDBG funding for the next five years, and it details our strategies and goals for the program for the next five years. Essentially, kind of adds credence to the action plan that we put forth every year, which you see and approve to the tune of about $800,000 to $900,000. So the emphasis is, of course, placed on providing assistance to low and extremely low-income people, including the homeless. So those are the areas that we focus in on. The plan has five parts, and I think you did get one in your packet. I'm sure you've perused it every day since you've got it in your packet. But it has these five elements. The Participation Plan, which we tweak every couple of years. That kind of lays out our processes for how we deal with amendments, how we deal with public hearing notices, things like that. There's a needs assessment, a market analysis that kind of focuses in on the needs, a strategic plan, and then the Annual Action Plan, which we'll be looking at as well. So it looks at our housing and homeless needs assessment, and of course, every year or every time we do this, our low and extremely low renters are considered to have the biggest need for affordable dwelling units in this town. That is not a mystery. That is what we have. And then, in the homeless side, which we've kind of seen a rise in, and you know, I think Chief Alexander would attest to this, that mental health services are really, really a scarce commodity around here, and that's one area, although we haven't really gotten too much into it into this action plan, but one area is that we're really going to be looking at probably in the next few years are some better mental health services in our community. So our market analysis, and I'm going to talk a little bit about our assessment that was done as well, indicates a shortage of accessible quality, affordable housing. So some of the areas that we're looking at funding, and you'll see that is a loan program for owner-occupied housing. We're going to be working with One Roof Housing from Duluth to look at that, to do a rehab program. And then, something that we know is create a property inspection program for landlords. Again, old housing stock, a lot of landlords, could be in some improvements there, and that's something that has come out of the market analysis. So our Strategic Plan, and I'm not going to read through all of them, more or less all are basis on the LMI community, and of course, housing is a huge one, not only creating, but also maintaining, and looking at blight elimination, as well as other organizations in our public service realms to continue support for them so they can provide services to the community. Not going to go through this too much, but I just wanted to, on the next slides, those are the goals. Administration and planning, that's just kind of our internal things, is to keep those rolling, of course, so we can pay folks to do the work and to keep track of the program. We have an economic development goal, which is organizations. We support the Entrepreneur Fund right now, which has a focus of low-mod business owners, or startups. Of course, repairing aging housing stock. We actually fund a co-compliance officer with some of these dollars. Not all of her salary, but she is, when she focuses in on areas that are low-mod income census tracts, that is what we focus in on. It kind of carries over with improving the neighborhood environment. That's our sidewalk program. Additional affordable housing, providing services with persons with disabilities. We work with Northwest Community Services on this. We work with other organizations that only deal with disabled folks, but also mentally disabled folks. Leveiating poverty and increasing self-sufficiency and ending chronic homelessness. So these are the goals that we look at when we're taking in applications and looking at where we're going to go in our action plan. So here's our action plan, which you'll also be approving with our Consolidated Plan tonight. This is the city side of our action plan. Our administration costs, that is more or less salaries, as well as, you know, some of our fringe, as well as any supplies, things like that, that we need to purchase. The $2,000 is our Fair Housing portion of this. We actually contract with Northwest Community Services to do our Fair Housing reporting. So getting into the crux, and I'm not going to go through all of them unless you have questions. Northeast Entrepreneur Fund, a group that looks, that helps out with folks that are low-mod income, that are trying to establish a business. They have to meet some criteria for that. The Business Improvement District, over however many years I've been here, we've been funding facade improvements, and it's been a very successful program. I sit on the committee, and Dave Miller's here. We sit on that committee with design and trying to help folks with facades. Not a huge grant, but if you can give folks, you know, a couple grand, it really goes a long way in helping them design, as well as come up with a design that's tasteful and looks nice. I mentioned One Roof Community Lending. We had a meeting last week, and we'll be establishing a rehab program again. That was eliminated about eight years ago. It was a great program. We will be working with them to kind of set up that program, work with our inspection crew, and this will be, you know, improvements and take into consideration lead paint and asbestos and all those things, but also trying to help folks that are in that income bracket to be able to make their home a better place and a safer place. I mentioned code enforcement. Cottage Superior, Superior Housing Authority, this is a housing project that we're putting some money into. And this is the folks from Gerard again. This is a South Superior project, just south of the Amsoil or the Track. Twenty-four units, mixed income-based, lot of what we call shallow subsidies, which are not, it's not a Section 8 project, per se. We've got some disabled American veteran preferances here, as well as some market rate as well. I think there's four or five units that are market rate. So this project, I do believe, is about a $4.5 million project. We're hoping that it will begin in the spring for that. So and that's kind of, it's going to be two units of 12 units apiece. Challenge Center, we help out always with some improvements at the Challenge Center for accessibility, energy, those types of things. We're going to be doing about $200,000 worth of sidewalks this year, or next year, I should say. So we'll be working on that, right, Todd? And then, we've also got some tree planting. We wanted to hit that up just because of the ashbor issues, and we wanted to put some money into our census tracts, help out parks and erect. It's not a heck of a lot of money, but it'll establish some trees in some of our census tracts. These are our public services. Public services, I won't go through all of these. These are the folks that are on the ground, everybody from CASDA to Senior Connections. These are small amounts of money, but they really mean a lot to these organizations to be able to provide services for their clients. It's not enough, of course, and we're bound by the federal government or HUD that only 15% of our total allocation can be spent on public services. And that amounts to, well, you'll see on the next slide, $96,000. So our city activities are a total of 845 roughly, 96 for public services, with a total budget of $941,000 this year. We're lucky enough... Let me talk to you a little bit about our grant, is actually the portion that comes from the federal government that we apply for and receive roughly around April or May. Program income is income that we get from old rehab mortgages that we've had, where people have sold off and refund us the money that we granted them, because a lot of the loans are deferred. So we get a lot of those money back, so we have to put that into the program as well, and that's an estimate. And then, we have some reallocation again this year. Throughout the years, the system is different now. We used to roll over a lot of our funds. We can't do that anymore, and so we're getting pressure to reallocate a lot of our funds that are in there. So this $200,000 is going to be pretty much designated for our sidewalk program. So that's essentially the budget in a nutshell. If you bear with me, I wanted to give you a little sneak peek, and it kind of ties into the CDBG issue. It ties into the housing issue, and our needs assessment, our needs analysis has come in and that we've been kind of waiting for. And it does show that we have a need for all types of housing in the city of Superior, which is really good news. So here's what the analysis provided us. We're going to have a more in-depth presentation on this, but, and this is kind of hard to see, and I'm hoping folks can see it, but essentially, demand in the city of Superior over the next 10 years or so is, in rental, market rate rental, we can absorb about 300 units. We probably wouldn't put those all on within 10 years, because the market probably couldn't absorb it, but that's the maximum that we could look at. You look at the 211 and the 133, those are shallow subsidy and deep subsidy units that are needed in our community, based on demand. The one thing that I like, and anecdotally, I like the multifamily for-sell units. Those are the folks that we haven't been able to really get to, and anecdotally, these are the folks that are retired, that want to travel, these are the folks that want to buy a condo. We haven't been able to get anybody with any comfort level to see that number and to realize that there's a demand for that. And I know Mayor's been really hitting the gavel hard on, you know what, we really need to drill down on that, and that 87 drills down on that number. And also, the single-family need is also important. This is really hard to see, but this breaks down essentially what the sections would be for price points, and you know, you look at the mid-price point, the 150 to 300 is kind of the largest demand that we have. The second largest is the 60 and the 22 and the single families. So nice little breakdown there, and I, same kind of things for the market rate and the shallow subsidies and how many units. So this will be our, kind of our guidebook, and some of the things that we want to keep an eye on when we're presenting information to you. So that is all I have. I can go back and talk about any slides, and if you've got any questions, or Mayor, if you want to open up the public hearing, and then we can talk after that, I guess it's up to you.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. There was a program, I assume, that ran from 2011 to going through 2015. Current program we're on, is that?
Yes, sir.
So how successful has that been in meeting the objectives, and how many of them remain the same?
You know, this group is virtually the same. The public services, they are virtually the same, unfortunately. We vary our programs quite a bit on the city side. You know, we'll come in and do sidewalks. Some years, Jack, we've done some streets, which really fits into the program well. We're introducing now the rehab program, which is a different animal. So we try to kind of rotate some things within our side. It is really difficult on the public service side, because it's hard to say no, and our board that we have very reluctantly divvies up these dollars and presents them, you know, and works with that group to deal with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Bender.
Yes, Jason, and you'll have to forgive anything that I say in mathematics, because it might be wrong, but I just used the calculator on my phone. So how come the full 15% is not being allotted for public service activities?
It's 13%, I believe, probably.
Okay.
Is that what it is?
Well, I thought you'd said 15, but I might have misheard.
I should have mentioned that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. It is 15%. We keep it at 13. Our years have some overlap. You go over that 15%, and it is a problem from HUD's standpoint. So we've, one of our plans is keeping that, because we've gone over it. And if we, to keep it under, one of our remedies is to keep it at 13%. And the public service agencies all know that, so we're trying to protect ourselves, I guess, Warren, because some years it'll be 14, some years it'll be 12, when all the reporting comes in.
Okay, because I was just looking at numerous of those that are listed there, and knowing that, well, everybody can use more money.
Oh.
Some that I know, like Just Kids Dental, they do a great job and could certainly use more money. CASDA, they're the only game in town as far as...
Yep, yep.
Abuse and...
And you know, some of these groups, back when I first started, I mean, our budget was $1.3 million. And some of these groups, like I know Lake Superior Health, which, you know, kind of is the only game in that...
Yes, it is.
You used to get about 30 grand. I know Boys and Girls Club, one of those days, you used to get about 20 to 25 grand.
Right.
So, yeah, we're kind of dealing with what we're dealt with.
With a lot less, okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know I'll be asked about it.
Thank you.
You have before you a resolution to approve the Community Development Block Grant Consolidation, Consolidated Plan for 2016 Action Plan. At this time, I will call for a public hearing and ask those that wish to speak or against to do so now. For the second time, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. For the third and final time, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call a public hearing to a close and ask the council the permission. For the motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, Jason.
Item 5.2 is a public hearing regarding a resolution to vacate a portion of the East-West Alley located in the vicinity of Pennsylvania Avenue and North 21st Street.
Once again, I'll call for a public hearing and ask those that wish to speak for or against to do so now. Those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. And for the final, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call a public hearing to close and ask the pleasure of the council. For the motion in second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion is carried.
5.3 is a resolution to vacate street and alleyways located in the vicinity of Hill Avenue and North 24th Street behind the city garage.
Once again, I'll ask for a public hearing, and those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. And for the final, those that wish to speak for or against may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask the pleasure of the council. You've heard a motion in second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item number six is a consent agenda. Counselor Olson is requesting to separate item 6.62 for discussion, and I am requesting to separate item 6.11 for discussion.
Heard a motion in second, approve, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Olson.
I'm going to read it first quick, okay? 6.62 is approval of the Finance Committee recommendations to approve the 2016 budget for the organizations funded through the Hotel Motel Tax Fund, and to hold in committee the criteria for organizations funded through the general fund.
Counselor.
So looking at the expenditures that went through the Finance Committee meeting the other day, Positively Superior, we are looking to give them $13,500, which we have basically done since 2012, and the actual 2015 spend was $10,800. My concern is that this is funded through the Hotel Motel Tax, and within Positively Superior, we also paid $2,700 every two months for ads that we put into the magazine. The magazine is a private publication out of Duluth, and I'm not sure that the motel, hotel tax system that we have is where the money for Positively Superior advertising should be. Some of the other ones that are listed here, I've got it on my phone. We fund SAHA, which brings in hockey tournaments and events that essentially do put people in our hotels and our restaurants. We've been doing that for a long time. Fourth of July, the SAHA is $25,000. Fourth of July is $20,000, brings tourists into our area, whether for a long weekend or whatever the case may be. The Sister City, again, bringing people from around the world, basically, to our city every other year. The Chamber Dinner, understandably so, that's only $750. Promotional items, Tower Avenue Summer Fest, again, bringing people into our community. Dragon Boat Festival, they didn't have any spend this year, but the proposed budget for 2016 is $4,100. The Winter Ice Sculpture, again, trying to get people into our hotels and in our restaurants and other retail business throughout the city. I am not at all in favor of paying a magazine, a private publication magazine, $13,500 to, if we're a partner in this, which we are listed, and then an additional $16,200. We're spending almost $30,000, and I just don't see the value. If this was put somewhere else, I just think it's a misuse of our Hotel Motel Tax, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Bender.
Say, before we have any more discussions, should we not have a motion to approve in a second before a discussion takes place?
Oh, we just did that.
We did not. No, there's been no...
There was a motion in a second on the floor, and then Counselor Olson jumped in. I'm sorry.
Was there a motion in second on the floor?
There was a motion in a second.
Okay.
I thought there was.
I thought there was not one, but if that is the case...
What is the motion?
There was a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda without the...
Right.
Right, yeah.
And it passed.
So 6.6 was not moved in second.
Correct.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve 6.6.
Could you restate that as to what you're actually saying?
Well, before we discuss this, it really needs to be, we need to have a motion on the floor. So I will put that motion on the floor to approve 6...
Don't we need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda first?
That's already been taken care of.
Have we won't done that?
Yes, that was done.
With the exception of 6.6...
6.6 and 6.11, yes. So I... I will make a motion to approve 6.6.
Heard a motion in second to approve 6.6 in its entirety?
Okay, may I make a comment now?
Sure.
Please. First of all, I would thank Counselor Olson for his looking into this, and I would bring up, since I am on the Lake Superior Dragon Boat Festival Executive Board, that every year we ask for $4,100, more or less, and we ask for that for advertising outside of a 50-mile area. And this year, I don't believe it was approved, and I don't believe we'll be asking for any of those funds. But many, many, I happen to serve on the Tourism Development Fund, as does Counselor McDonald, and there are many groups that come before us, and there are very specific criteria as far as what those groups will be bringing to the area. And Counselor Olson already mentioned heads and beds, and that's how they tell whether this is doing its job or not. And I like Positively Superior Magazine. I don't always agree about everything that was written in it, or the way it was written, but I do like the magazine. However, I can see that point. But if we look at it as pure advertising, it's 13,000 plus another, what did you say, another 10?
It's an additional $2,700 every two months for advertising, which comes up to $16,200.
Okay.
Director Vito.
Just for clarification, I think we have a few different places that fund the Positively Superior. This, the 13.5, would be $2,700 times 5. I'm not sure why it's not six issues, but it's, that's what was budgeted here, 2,700 times 5. That's... It's, we've budgeted that amount every year, so it looks like we're budgeting for five issues at 2,700, and then, of course, that's coming out of the Hotel Motel Fund. But then, the bid, Business Improvement District, they send their own funds, and so I think they're, it gets confusing, because we pay for, or we run the financials for the bid, so when we print out what's paid to Positively Superior, it can look confusing, like it's coming all from the city, where the 16 is, I think, the bid money, and then this 13.5 is coming from City Hotel Motel Tax Fund, and then there's the smaller piece from Jason's general fund budget that pays for some advertising, and that totals 3,000 a year. So I just wanted to clarify.
Counselor Finsland.
This was discussed at the Finance Committee, and this was brought up about Positively Superior as well. But it was, the decision was based on the idea that it would be incorrect to leave these people high and dry at this time. If we want to change their funding and we want to do something about it, we need to have some more discussion with them. If you read the, or agenda item there, it was suggested that the organizations that were requesting funding attend a Finance Committee meeting to explain the details of their organization and answer any questions the committee may have. Some of it involves the fact that some of them have quite a reserve balance, and it seems incorrect to continue to fund an organization that's probably got two years of unnet funding in reserve already, why we should be putting money into that. The other thing is, we are going to face tighter financial times, and we do need to discuss all of these items with these people, because we're going to be making cuts somewhere. We can't just keep taking things out of, you know, operating funds for the city. Some of these people are going to face some of the cuts that the city is facing as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There's a motion in second on the floor to approve...
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Counselor Sweeney.
The 13.5, which we pay them, what are we getting for that?
It's a good question, and I think it's what we're getting for it, Counselor, in my opinion. It's the only vehicle we have in the entire city of Superior that promotes the businesses and the industries we have here. It's widely read. People discover what we have in the city, and I think it's a very, very well-spent $13,000. If, there is another vehicle that we have in the city that promotes itself, and it promotes the businesses and industries in the community. I am very strong about the fact that Positively Superior's done a wonderful job for the city and the county.
The articles that are written from the city's perspective, you write an article every magazine, I think, some other, somebody else writes an article or two. There's always two or three articles about Superior. Is that, am I accurate in saying that?
Correct.
Okay. So we're not paying directly for that, right, other than for this fee that, or whatever we call it, we're paying them 2,700 times 5?
For the fee, we get three pages.
I'm sorry?
For the fee, we get three pages. Am I correct, Mayor?
That's correct, Mayor.
So in effect, we are, whether we call it advertising or information, there is some benefit to spending that money. We are getting... We are getting something for it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, is a counselor?
I don't want to dispute the fact, Mayor, that it's a good magazine and it's and it's a good tool. But I don't want to discount the the fact that we have the Douglas County Development Association, we have the Chamber Commerce, and we have the bid that promote our our city and our county as well. My concern is that I don't feel that it's appropriate to fund a private magazine out of our hotel motel tax, that's all. Thank you.
You have a motion in a second on the floor to approve, under the consent agenda, six point two through seven, the entirety. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Item six point eleven is a recommendation to approve an application to transfer a Class B liquor and beer license by the Office Bar at twenty one twenty nine East Second Street to twenty two fifteen East, East Fifth Street, I'm sorry, to twenty two fifteen East Second Street, which is previously the Old Town business. I'm asking that, rather than approve this, you prove a contingent upon lease negotiations. I understand that negotiations may have broke down, I'm not quite sure what's going on, but Mr. Gatske is here this evening and has requested to speak to you.
Linda Hoffman does not want to lease out the Old Town to me. Linda Hoffman does not want to lease out the Old Town to me. So I kind of, I don't know what, what do you want me to do? I mean, I've had thirty days to completely move a business, and that's not really feasible. I'm at my wit's end, and I'm at a loss.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Well, I think it's difficult for us to transfer a license when there's no legal place to put it, since the negotiations have broke down. I think maybe we need to just maybe put this on hold, you get your negotiations done and come back.
I'm gonna have to, I guess. I still hold my license until through June of two thousand sixteen.
Terry, how long can you hold a license on idle? Isn't there a specific amount of time?
The the ordinance states that they have to be open, oh, gosh, now I want to say a hundred and twenty hours prior, in the six months prior to renewal.
Okay.
So he does have some time prior to renewal.
All right. So then you're, you're safe as far as holding your license. I think you need to negotiate with the owner there and come back.
Say, Mr. Gatske, I have a question. What other properties have you looked at?
I've looked at Bird's Bar, I've looked at the Old Town, I even looked at Matty's. There's no place for me to go.
You know, just to make sure you understand, you're not losing your license, you still have your license. We just need to, we just need to.
I'm losing my livelihood and my life.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Thompson, I'm an employee of Corey's at the Office Bar, part-time employee. I guess, I don't, I kind of don't understand what's going to happen with the property after the demolition that takes place. Is there plans for that property, or would there be a possibility of purchasing that after a piece of property there to build on after the demolition is complete?
So, once the building is demolished.
What are the plans for the property?
There are none, not from the city's standpoint.
Is it still, would it be still owned by the owner of the buildings as if we speak?
A demo doesn't automatically transfer ownership in the real property to the municipality.
Unless the demolition wasn't paid for, or something like that.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Pardon? Yeah, I I guess, hearing Mr. Gatske, I'd ask that we just receive and file that application?
Motion in a second, receive and file. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Item seven point one, Planning and Port Director Cirque is recommending to award the Fraser Shipyard Dock while rehabit, rehabi, I can't even speak the same thing, I'm sorry, Phase Three Project to Marine Tech LLC for three million one hundred and seventy two dollars, one hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety eight cents.
Heard the motion in a second to approve. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Seven point two, Planning and Port Director Cirque is recommending to award Fraser Phase Three Construction Observation Services to AMI Consulting Engineers for seventy six thousand five hundred dollars.
Heard the motion in a second. Counselor Sweeney.
Can I just ask on both this seven point one and seven point two, were there bids on this? Were there more than?
I apologize, and essentially, these, the memos got kind of squished up in here, Jack.
Oh.
So seven point one got below seven, the, so the bids are right here for the actual construction project.
There were bids, I don't need to see.
Yep, there were four of them.
Okay.
And then, there was actually only one for the consulting services. We did, I know Linda put it out there for, and made some phone calls, trying to get folks to to do that. However, AMI was the only one, and actually, AMI was the design engineer for the project as well.
Counselor Bitch, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried.
Item nine point one, Counselor Garfield is requesting reconsideration of the action taken at the October sixth Council meeting. Item six point sixteen, which was an application for a Class B liquor and beer license by Super One Liquor LLC at twenty two oh two East Second Street. Also, Super One Foods submitted a hundred and seventy seven pages of petition sheets containing approximately two thousand four hundred and eighty two signatures pertaining to the liquor license application. Actually, Counselor Graham needs to make that motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Motion in a second to reconsider. Counselor Harris.
Yeah, I just need to abstain from discussion and the vote.
Thank you.
I also need to abstain, since I work for Keyport at Wine and Beer Tasteings.
Counselor Garfield, I mean, all in favor of the motion for reconsiderations, reconsideration, signify by saying aye.
Wait, we have, this is just to ask for reconsideration, it's not the vote on the license yet. Does that make sense? It'll be right after that, okay.
All in favors. Motion for reconsideration, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Garfield.
Now we need a motion on the floor for the application.
You've heard the motion in a second to approve the application.
We have several people signed up this evening, if you want to take those first. Attorney Markovich.
Well, basically, you've heard almost everything I had to say at the last meeting. I do have, by the way, another six hundred and fifty seven.
Toby?
Yeah, I'll get over here. I do have another six hundred and fifty seven signatures to add to the petition, which brings the total to over three thousand one hundred people who have indicated that they want Super One Foods to be treated as fairly as everybody else who's obtained liquor licenses from this council. The the employees of Super One have asked to at least come here and show you how much the employees who have made Super One a successful operation favor this license as well. I'm just going to ask those people who are here as employees of Super One just to stand to show their, who's here to support it. Thank you. More than that, I can't say, they say, it's not this council's job to regulate competition, it's this council's job to treat everybody equally and fairly. You've granted other liquor licenses since our application has been made, I think, three of them, and I think simply Super One is entitled to the same consideration as anybody else in this city. And I certainly hope that you approve that license tonight. Thank you.
And I'll just remind the group, as Ms. Kalan calls the next name, we we do cap you at a three-minute presentation, Mr. Markovich is well under the line. I'll hit the lamp or something to try to alert you to that without interrupting you.
Steve Levine, Attorney Levine.
Hello, Mayor, councilors. Here we are again, third time in a little over a year, and I'm here on behalf of fighting for Jim and Carol Boland, as well as the other local bars and liquor stores. I've been told that one of the councilors has requested, is looking at reconsideration because of the threat of a lawsuit. And at the prior meetings, city attorney has advised that as long as the council votes, and their vote is not arbitrary or capricious, it should not, a lawsuit would not prevail. I don't want to think that those types of threats would affect the council's decisions tonight, and in the past. In reference to the petition, Super One has submitted a petition allegedly in support of their application for a bar and liquor store. I say allegedly because the language of the petition does not present the signers with the background and the facts as to why the application was initially denied. If a petition were presented to those same signers, asking to deny a license based upon holding that Super One, to hold Super One accountable and responsible for their promises and their words not to open a bar liquor store, and in return for that promise, received a land swap with a neighboring bar, I believe those same signers would have just, there'd be just as many signers holding them to their word, holding them accountable. I'd like to refer to the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes, city council meeting, and I, as to when this issue first came up. In those minutes, Mayor Hagan stated that Miners is a very fine corporation and has invested in our community more than once. He's been involved in this project for a long time, and there were two things agreed upon. There was no intention to have a tavern or liquor store at this location, and two, the alley would be widened so that parking could be made available. As the project moved forward, the alley was not widened, and Super One applied for an alcohol license. When questioned about the gentleman's agreements, the miners stated agreements were lost in translation, what was done is done, and things changed. Mayor Hagan believed he is a man of his word and a man of integrity. Just because the ownership of the corporation changed, the promises should be upheld. Councilors that voted against the license that time, at that time, also referred to those promises. That decision for denying the license is not arbitrary nor capricious. The Ron case is still good law in Wisconsin. The Ron case involved East End and the city of Superior. The courts of Wisconsin at that time, the appellate court, stated the council refused the license because they were of the opinion that four taverns were sufficient in this territory, that in granting licenses, they sought to give preference to men who had been in the tavern business previously, and that, as there were four already in business in East End, they refused the plaintiff license, rather than to give him a license and put a man out of business who had previously been in business in the East End. There was nothing against his personal character or against the particular building in which he was to operate, other than they were of the opinion that four taverns were sufficient for the East End. Everyone's for free enterprise, everyone's for capitalism. I believe everybody here is for honoring their their word. The fact is, this license will harm existing businesses, without question. The council has the right to help the existing businesses.
Steve, your pass.
All right. The public good is not served with another bar liquor license. Thank you.
Walt Hoggan.
My name is Walter Hoggan, and I am the owner of Pudges Bar in East End of Superior. And I spoke about this before, but I did bring tonight a map or a drawing that was brought to me by Brian Porzier to show me what their plans were about the, what they were going to do with the property that they wanted from me and 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 the arrangement of of the store. And both my wife and I asked if if there was going to be a bar and liquor store in there, and they said no. And we both asked this a couple of times, just to reassure us, and then this drawing was given to us to show that the arrangement of the store, which didn't show a bar and liquor store, and and my wife had asked, well, just kind of jokingly, where is the, where are you going to put, you know, you know, are you going to put a bar in there? And they said, he said, no. And so, anyway, I made the land switch, or the land trade, on on that agreement, and and I know that sometimes it, you know, it was a gentleman's agreement, it was, it was, and I thought I was dealing with gentlemen that would be able to, you know, live up to their word. Through East End business meetings that we had, Mayor Hagan had talked to Super One, and we had asked if there was going to be any intention of a additional bar and liquor store, and if I am correct, they had told Mayor Hagan through those meetings that there wasn't going to be, and that's something maybe you could, Mayor Hagan might talk about that, or you could ask him. And so, you know, maybe, maybe you don't believe me, but, you know, maybe you think that that a gentleman's agreement isn't something that that should stand up, but to me it is, because I I think that when when you, your word is all you have in life. And and I know that Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck had mentioned at the last meeting, and it was also in the paper, about the, on the city council proceedings, about the, that, you know, that it was a change in in business plans. Well, and when I, when I had my apartment building, the eighteen-unit apartment building next door, and then I I bought the tavern, and to me, it was, it wasn't a change in business plans, and and I just had purchased the bar, and, but I hadn't made any promises to anybody. And so, that's, that's what I had to say. And if anybody would like to see, if you want me to pass this around, I would be glad to, to show you what they had given us.
Well, is this, okay, is it, can you hear me now? I've been a resident of Superior for the last twelve-plus years, and I like this city. I like what we've done with it. I think the mayor's done a beautiful job with so many different projects that we've had. But I get a little tired seeing liquor license and liquor establishments always having to come up, recome up, recome up. You know, why can't we just have so many liquor establishments and just leave it at that? Like the previous gentleman were saying, there are plenty of bars. Like the previous gentleman were saying, there are plenty of bars, and do we want to be known as the city that has all these bars, and you can always come up to Superior and, and drink yourself happy? I don't think so. This is, but yet, when I moved up here from the cities, that's what I was told about Superior. We were, we were looking in Duluth, because that's where our realtor said we should be looking, and then we said, well, what about Superior? Oh, you don't want to live in soup town. Didn't even know what the term stood for. But I tell you, we're very proud to be residents of Superior, and I would like to see the families that are raising their children in this city have the opportunity to see their kids grow up and their children grow up and not become alcoholics. As the, the plan was shown for two thousand sixteen, we're talking about CASDA, we're talking about the homeless. And so, to me, that means drug and meth and alcohol are things that are a major issue up here, that we should be addressing a little bit more positively, instead of always trying to argue about how many more liquor licenses we need up here. I don't have any relatives up here, other than my husband, so I don't, I can speak freely as far as what I hear from other people, because I'm not gonna hurt somebody's relative that works at one of these places and so forth. So some people say that it's because of convenience, that A1, Super One wants to have a one-stop-shop. Do we want to make that a necessity? Some people say we should have more upscale restaurants, so we aren't traveling over the bridge to Duluth, and a lot of our elderly people don't even want to do that, heaven forbid you go over that bridge. And so, I guess, I, bottom line, do not want to see Superior being described as an alcoholic city to come and visit, and we've got so many wonderful things up here that we should be proud of, and I am proud of, and I know you all are too. Thank you for your time.
No other members of the audience are wishing to speak?
Discussion by the council? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In repeating Mr. Levine's sentiments, I had been going over the August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes, and he already read the portion of the minutes regarding what your sentiments were at the time. I was just wondering if you still maintain those sentiments, or if you've changed your position on this since then?
I have no comment.
All right.
Any further discussion?
If not, all in favor, signify by s-
Do you need a-
You want the roll?
We need them to reiterate that again? Yes, okay. We need a roll call vote, and if you're voting against the approval of the license, you need to state your reason why again, okay?
If you're voting against it, correct.
We're gonna start with Counselor Herrick, who is abstaining this time. Counselor Dennis Dahlbeck?
I'm in favor of the petition.
Counselor Esther Dahlbeck?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
No, because I haven't received any further information that was presented to me from the last time I voted against this.
Counselor Fantasy?
My vote in favor of, yes.
Counselor Bender is abstaining. Counselor Sweeney?
Yes.
Counselor Garfield?
Yes.
Counselor Finland?
Yes.
That is six to one, and that motion passes, and the license is approved.
The motion carried.
Item ten point one is a resolution introduced by Mayor Bruce Hagan endorsing better cities, Superior's legislative efforts for the city center district, and Bruce Thompson is signed up to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here tonight seeking a resolution in support of our quest to achieve legislation to create a new array of tools to help further develop and compete in the marketplace and grow our community. This resolution has already been endorsed by the county board, the Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, the Development Association, the school district, and I have several other resolutions coming our way as well, and we'd like you to consider it. Again, a city center district would, would require, if we're allowed to be successful, which we're basically asking the state permission, to be successful and compete in this marketplace, that would all come back to you for establishment of a city center district if we are successful. I'll remind you that two years ago, Mayor Hagan, after a trip out to, to see some major downtown redevelopment, and on the heels of our major street reconstruction in downtown Superior, was to establish a privately-led initiative to explore major growth opportunities in Superior, and how we could identify ourselves, redefine ourselves, compete favorably, and grow this community, which I felt hadn't happened since nineteen oh-six, but the mayor corrected me, and he said it was World War Two, right? So fundamentally, we, we really want to see what we can do to get this legislation passed. We have endorsement, or both Senator Tiffany and Senator Bealie are working on crafting the language. We've drafted a twenty-six-page bill, which we believe they will be cultivating, and hopefully bringing to vote yet this fall. So are there any questions?
You have a motion in a second? Motion, a second before you, to approve the resolution. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I undertake a motion to adjourn if there's no further business? Motion, a second?